Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City Bowling Green, Kentucky Regular Meeting, City Hall, August 5th, 2025 at 4:30 PM. We're going to begin the evening with the invocation, pledge allegiance, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Carlos Bailey.
I would ask everybody to stand and to bow your heads. Father first, thank you for allowing us to be here. And thank you, God, for putting us in a position and just give us wisdom to be good stewards of our community. And God, I want to tell you, thank you for all the opportunities you have given Bowling Green. Bless everyone that's in this room. Bless our first responders. Bless our community and bless our neighbors. But especially, Lord, bless those who are homeless and bless those who are going through something right now, Lord, and bless those who just need, who's making it hard to meet ends meet. Thank you for all the opportunities you have given us. Lord, give us the wisdom to go through the discussions like as you ask us to do. Give us the compassion and wisdom to make sure that we're voting on everything that we have to. Because, Lord, every vote, there's a real person behind it. Every ordinance that we have impacts a real life. Thank you for all the opportunities of Bowling Green. And, Lord, for most and everything, bring unity into this room. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
And I would ask everybody to turn to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Seated. All right. So first things first, we're going to begin with the roll call. Mrs. Jackson.
Commissioner Perigin. Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Beasley Brown. Here. Commissioner Hill. Here. Mayor Alcott.
Here. All right. Our first item of business is we have about two hours of discussion, then we're going to do some annul. No, no, we're not. We're going to bring up the nine and 10-year-olds. This is the Kentucky State League Champions for Little League. And I'd like to bring up their coaches. Let's bring right here the team. Bring the team right here. And then, coaches, we have Travis Adams, Nick Jewell, Steve Hooks, and Jeff Goodnight. So Jim, yeah, fill it all in. We've got like a little semicircle right here. Coaches, we have you. Are there any other coaches we need knowledge? That's it? All right. Coaches, come on in. I just want to, we, the commissioners, turn around, gentlemen. We, the commissioners, want to congratulate you because one day you're going to be major league players and we want to, you know, tickets to the ballgame. And we want your signature now and your cards. No, but congratulations. Well done. I hear there's some real, you guys are a good team, right? You work hard? How about these coaches? What do you think of them? Do they work hard? When they say run, you run? They say jump, you say how high? All right. Well, that's what it takes. All right. Well, just wanted to congratulate you and Kentucky State Champions. That's pretty incredible. We're going to take a little photo with you.
Did y'all want us to hold up that?
We got the state banner.
All right, a banner. And hold it above the chair so they can see it, okay?
Let's hold that up proud. Don't put it over your head.
Hold it.
Yes, we're thinking, let us hold it.
All right, we're going to take it.
So they can see it.
We're going to move it. Two, three. That's paparazzi right there. Let's give it up for the Kentucky State League Champions. Good job, guys.
Can I just say one thing?
Of course.
Thank you for having us here today. Number two, on behalf of the team, our coaches and BG's Little League, I want to say thank you to Brent Vulture and Pete Samios for all the hard work they've done at Curyacus to make sure our season went as sweet. We had a lot of rain, but I think we maybe had one or two rain as I was in. So just want to give them a thank you for all the hard work that they've done over at Curyacus.
Guys, why don't y'all say on two, "Thank you, Mom and Dad." One, two.
Thank you, Mom and Dad.
Ah, that's awesome.
Y'all count Goodnight.
I'll bet there might have been a grandparent involved.
While we are exiting, before I turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Mizel, our Bowling Green firefighter report is out. It's online. Go to BGKY.org, look in departments, and you'll find the firefighter department. But their, their report is quite incredible. It's about their team. It's about their inspections, about their accreditation. It's about some of the major fires they have fought. Community, I'm just really proud of many of our departments, but it's nice to highlight the firefighters and their work and their effort. And congratulations. I don't know if Chief Brooks is here and your team, but I know, congratulations on that. And check that out, Bowling Green. And then, Mr. Mizel, I'll turn it over to you.
I have a couple of awards recognitions to make, Mayor. First of all, our own Katie Schaller Ward, Assistant City Manager, CFO, is now a Certified Municipal Officer from the KLC City Officials Training Center. Katie has completed, do you know how many hours? Hundreds and hundreds of hours over her career. And she is recognized now that this is the top tier of the KLC training. There's Level 1, Level 2, Level 3. Katie's at the top, Certified Municipal Officer, with the KLC training. And she will be honored at the KLC Conference on Friday morning at the breakfast, September 26th. So congratulations to Katie.
Congratulations, Katie.
Secondly, recently, our transit program underwent triennial review by the FTA. This is a thorough review of our compliance with our transit program. It is very difficult. And guess what? We received no findings, which is pretty much unheard of in this kind of thing. And I'd like to recognize Tim McQuarter. He's our General Manager of our Transit System. Tim's here. And his Austin Sims, our Operational Manager. Austin's with us tonight. So these guys did an outstanding job keeping that system running and clean. This is basically their audit by the feds, and it's a clean report. Zero findings. Congratulations to these guys. Good job. If I may go on, there'll be a need for a closed session, and I'd like Ashley to read the reason.
Pursuant to Kara, 61-8101, in for discussions related to negotiations of a contract. Don't move.
Second. Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes.
And last but not least, if you are in the audience wanting to make public comments, please sign the register in the back corner of the room. We'll take those up after our regular session is over. That would be after, after closed. Before the closed session, sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Our first item is approval of minutes, regular meeting, July 15th, 2025.
Second.
All right. Move by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-180.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Danielle Piper to the position of Assistant Communications Manager in the Police Department.
Move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Ashley Remington to come up, our Communications Manager. Ashley, going to recommend to you a promotion. This is a new position that you all approved in the FY '26 budget, and we're very grateful for. And I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Mr. Mizel. Mayor, Commissioners, I want to thank Chief Delaney for allowing me this opportunity to stand before you all today to make this promotion, our recommendation for promotion of Danielle Piper to the new position of Assistant Communications Manager. Danielle is here with us today, and she'll stand. She began her career here with the city in 2008. And after several years of dedicated service, she promoted to Communication Supervisor in 2019. Over the past few years, she has worked as the Communications Training Supervisor, guiding, mentoring, and shaping the next generation of dispatchers. So in our profession, most decisions are made in a matter of seconds. So as you can imagine, it's a difficult transition when your entire career, you've trained for that, and now you're going to step back and strategically plan for the future. And over the last few years, I've had the privilege of watching as Danielle has embraced that challenge. And I can honestly say, in every moment, she has met that moment. And she's exceeded all expectations. So it is, I'm proud tonight to recommend her for promotion.
Thank you, Ashley. Danielle, do you have anyone with you tonight? Can you say hello to them? I'll stand up. Thank you very much. Well, we look forward, thank you for your excellence. And I'll say congratulations to you a little early because I'm proud of you and proud of that team and your leadership moving forward. Commissioners? All right. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Danielle. Municipal Order Number 2025-181.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Emily Cruz to the position of Inspection Support Specialist in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
Due to a recent retirement, and I'd like to thank Tap of the Joiner. She was with us for many, many years, recently retired. So congratulations to Tap, and thank her for all of her years of service. I'd like to ask Lori Gray, HR Manager, for NCS, to come up and make the recommendation for the fill of this job.
Good evening. Thank you all. I'm here to recommend the promotion of Emily Cruz to the position of Inspection Support Specialist. Emily is here this evening. She will stand. So we advertised for this position, recruited, I'm sorry, recruited for this position internally and externally. We received 124 applications, and we did nine interviews. Emily Cruz is being recommended for the promotion. She has been employed since July of 2022 in our Parks Maintenance Division. She's an Office Associate 2 there. This will be a promotion for her to going into the Inspection Support Specialist. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Lori. Emily, you have anyone with you? All right. All right. Well, congratulations to you and your family tonight in this promotion. Commissioners, ready? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Emily. Municipal Order Number 2025-182.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Carissa Waldrop to the position of Staff Accountant 1 in the Finance Department.
Move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Tiara Britt, our HR Manager, for Finance to come up. This position is another result of a backfill, of another promotion that took place in Finance. Tiara.
Good evening, everyone. We would like to promote Ms. Carissa Waldrop to the Staff Accountant 1 position. She is here with us this evening.
Carissa, you stand.
So she's kind of the same, in the same boat as Emily. She was here a couple of years ago. We hired her as an Office Associate 2. A little bit about the position. She's going to be tackling a lot of the daily reconciliation. We had over around 40 applicants, interviewed seven. We had an exam, not an exam, kind of like a quiz during the interview process to kind of test their skills. And Carissa knocked it out of the park, which we know she was sharp, you know, two years ago when we hired her. But she was hired initially in 2023. She's helped with auditing processes and many other financial functions for Parks. So we're very excited to get her started. And let me know if you have questions.
Great. Thank you, Tiara. Carissa, before you sit down, do you have, bring anyone with you? All right. Very so. You want to wave at anybody on TV?
I think my boyfriend is watching.
Low boyfriend.
My dad and brother is up in the air. They're busy.
All right. Well, we're glad you're here tonight. Congratulations. Commissioners? All right. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Carissa. Municipal Order Number 2025-183.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Tyler Metters to the position of Medium-Heavy Truck Technician in the Public Works Department.
Move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Another new position you all approved in the budget that was much needed. I'd like to ask Lori Gray to come back up, HR Manager for Public Works, make this recommendation. Lori?
Hello again. So I'm here to make the recommendation for the appointment of Tyler Metters to the position of Medium-Heavy Truck Technician. He is here with us this evening. If you want to stand up, Tyler. We received 20 applications for this position, and we interviewed four candidates. Tyler is being recommended for the appointment. He graduated from Allen County High School, and he currently worked, his most current employer was Greenwood Ford Lincoln, where he was Automotive Technician. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Lori. Tyler, you have anyone with you tonight? All right. Well, congratulations. You got a team members here or anybody? All right. That's a team. That's pretty cool. All right. Well, congratulations, Tyler. And we're going to make this official. All right. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal Order Number 2025-184.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Audrey Browning and Brianna Gates to the position of Communications Dispatcher 1 in the Police Department.
Move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
We did some resignations and retirements here recently. We've got two positions here that we'd like to pull in to dispatch. And I'd like to ask Lori Gray, HR Manager for Police, to come back up. Lori?
I'm here to also recommend the appointment of Audrey Browning and Brianna Gates to the position of 911 Call Taker, Communications Dispatcher 1. They are both here this evening. If you all stand up for me. All right, great. This is a position that we recruit for year-round. So so far this year, we have, we have received 112 applications, and we've interviewed six candidates. Audrey Browning, she has a degree in Criminology and Psychology from Western Kentucky University. Her most recent position is a Police Cadet 1 at the Bowling Green Police Department. Brianna Gates is currently attending Western Kentucky University pursuing a degree in Criminology and Forensic Psychology. Her most recent position was a team member at McDonald's. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Lori. Brianna, anybody with you?
I have my grandmother's family, my dad, Justin, my stepdad, Angie, my aunt, my sister, and his friends. Lori and I.
Fantastic. All right. And Brianna? I mean Audrey, sorry.
I have my family here. They're all there. And then my boyfriend is home, and I'm still here. I have friends here, and people watching at home.
Fantastic. All right. We're going to make this official, ladies. Please stand up. We're not done with you. All right. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, ladies. Municipal Order Number 2025-185.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Zadra Hill and Deandre Wilson to the position of Police Cadet 2 in the Police Department.
Move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to bring Lori back up one more time.
I'm here this time to recommend the appointment of Deandre Wilson and Zadra Hill to the position of Police Cadet 2. They will be enrolled in the Class 10 of the Bowling Green Law Enforcement Academy that will start in April of 2026. They're both here. I'll have them stand up. Deandre graduated from South Central Kentucky Community and Technical College with an Associate's Degree, and he is currently a Cadet 1 in the Bowling Green Police Department. Zadra Hill graduated from Western Kentucky University with a Bachelor's Degree in Criminology and Spanish. She is currently also a Cadet 1 with the Bowling Green Police Department. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Lori. Did y'all bring anyone with you tonight?
Yes, I brought my parents, Dave and Amy Hill, and my sister, Lori.
Thank you.
And my girlfriend, my mother, my nana, my sister, and my aunt.
It's a good support system. Well, you're going to need them, and we thank you for your continued service, going from Cadet 1, Cadet 2. And I believe you probably want to become police officers or you're on the right path. So thank you both very much. Commissioners?
Oh, you had to bring the nana. I got it.
All right. Let's make it official. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal Order Number 2025-186.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Madeline Taylor to the position of Parks Forester Arborist in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This was a new position you all also approved for Parks and for the FY '26 budget. And I'd like to ask Tiara to come up and make the recommendation. Tiara?
So my recommendation is for the Parks Forester Arborist position. We would like to recommend Ms. Madeline Taylor, if she would please stand. So this position is going to be responsible for planning, implementation, a lot of administrative tasks, all of the grunt work that, you know, goes unnoticed. But she will be part of that team. We had around 20 applicants. We interviewed seven. And Ms. Madeline holds a Bachelor's and Master's Degree in Agriculture with a concentration in Horticulture. She's an active member of the Kentucky Women in Ag, and she has many other accolades. But so excited to get her started. She's a rock star, and we know she's going to do well. So let me know if you have questions.
It's your ag commissioner right here. I'm saying it, calling it out. You have any introductions you want to make?
I have my parents here, and I have my sister, my niece, nephew, brother-in-law, and boyfriend.
All right. Y'all heard it. This is the beginning of a lot right here. So, well, we're going to make it official, Commissioners? Okay. Roll call.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Madeline. Coordinates BG number 2025-14, first reading, nonbinding.
Ordinance granting franchise related to telecommunications system. Ordinance granting a nonexclusive telecommunications or related non-cable franchise to Lumos Fiber of Kentucky LLC for the use of rights away for the operation and maintenance of a telecommunications or related non-cable system within the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and further authorizing the execution of a franchise agreement.
Move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to ask Hillary Hightower, City Attorney, to give you an overview of this item. Hillary?
Good evening. As you all know, anytime any fiber company wants to work in our right-of-way, they're required to get a franchise agreement with us other than AT&amp;T. They're the only exception. Lumos Fiber contacted us. They would like to do residential fiber in our right-of-way. Grace Simmerall is here. She's happy to answer any of your questions. We went through the statutory procedures, and we're ready to approve their agreement, and they will start laying residential fiber.
Hey. Say Grace.
Grace Simmerall.
Hello, Grace.
So she can answer any questions you have. So she can answer any questions you have. I think, I don't think they have their plan complete yet, but they're close, and they will work with our Public Works Department with Melissa and Melanie once they get that ready.
Can you tell us just a little bit, Grace, about your company and some of your plans for the community?
Of course. So thank you, Mayor, thank you Commissioners so much for allowing me to speak to you all this evening. As Ms. Hightower said, my name is Grace Simmerall, I'm the Director of Market Development for Lumos Fiber. Lumos might be new to the community, but it's not a new company. So it was formed when two mom-and-pop telephone companies, both over 100 years old, one based in Virginia and the other based in North Carolina, merged together for the purpose of expansion. They had individually been building fiber to their customers for over 20 years, and felt like they had a great product, and they really wanted to provide it to other people. So if you were lucky enough to get, live in High Point, North Carolina in 2007, you would have had fiber to the home. In terms of expansion, South Carolina was the first expansion market, we announced that in 2023. Last year, we announced Ohio, Kentucky, and Illinois, and this year so far, we've announced Florida, Georgia, Alabama, and Indiana. So 10 states, we anticipate announcing more. The other thing that's notable about Lumos Fiber is that we were able to receive regulatory approval, as well as close a deal to form a joint partnership with T-Mobile. So we are officially part of T-Mobile Fiber.
Okay.
And, and once we come into the community, that's how your residents will see us.
So when your fiber's laid, how, what company will people contact to get those products, or to get fiber turned on?
Yep, to cut, to sign up for service, they'll, they'll be contacted by T-Mobile or T-Fiber. But for the construction side, all of that is Lumos still. We are the ones who have the core competency around engineering, construction, making sure that, you know, any sort of communications or government affairs go through Lumos, and in fact, very specifically goes through me. So we're not gonna be a company that makes you hunt and peck for the right person. I made sure Ashley got my card, so that you all can have a copy, and that's my cellphone number, so you'll be able to reach me directly.
Thank you.
Our construction technique, a lot of people do ask about this, we prefer buried utilities. It provides for a much better product for, excuse me, for residents. You get fewer disruptions from storms, or utility breaks, the occasional squirrel chew, I'm sure you all have had that happen before, as well as, you know, something happening to utility poles. Once that infrastructure is in the ground, it's basically future-proof. I mean, we've seen this in places like Western North Carolina, which was hit by Hurricane Helene last year. What we saw was that, yes, customers lost service, but that was because of power. We could still see light traveling through our buried fiber cables. And we could reassure customers, once power was restored, their internet connection would be restored as well.
Miss First.
Appreciate you being here tonight, and explaining a little bit about your company and history, and the correlation with T-Mobile, and we wish you success in Bowling Green.
Thank you so much, Mayor, thank you Commissioners. And again, if you all have any other questions, don't hesitate to reach out.
No further questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-187.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Submission of a Grant Application and Acceptance of Grant Funds with the Federal Transit Administration for Fiscal Year 2023 and 2024 Transportation Assistance under the Section 5310 Program.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
So we got notice of this FTA grant, Section 5310, funding 387, 597, requires a 20% match. We would like to use this to supplement our ADA para-transit program, the door-to-door service that transit provides. Additionally, some funds would also be used to expand the ADA service fleet, purchase some wayfinding signage, construct, construct some curb cuts for ADA passengers, and request your approval of this, 387, 597, with a match of 77,00518. Nick Cook and, or, I'm sorry, Jake's here, can answer, Jake Moore can answer any of your questions you might have on this one.
For being here, Jake. Commissioners, questions?
A quick question, or I guess, request. Would you mind sharing with the community how, or I don't know if maybe you all might need to come, just it's such a great program of getting folks to where they need to go, with this accessibility, and so just maybe explain to the community how, if they need this service, how they can get connected to it.
So thank you Commissioners, thank you Mayor. So like Jeff said, these are para-transit funds, it's specifically targeted for riders who have additional accessibility needs, so thank ADA compliance. So this is funding that we like to use to expand our services, because we're always gonna be needing new capital and new improvements to better our system for folks who are differently abled, people in wheelchairs, things like that. So this is just one of the small ways that we can do that, by spending these, these funds to purchase a van, put in some curb cuts. You know, if someone is hard of seeing, you know, they have trouble finding what route they're supposed to go to, you know, if you've seen our little bus stops, the sign is on the pole there, but if you're hard of seeing, you might not be able to tell, you know, is this my stop, is this my route? So these are just some simple ways that we can use this, FDA's federal funds to target needs. So we're not sure where these curb cuts are gonna go yet, it's gonna be targeted at our busy stops, to maximize the effectiveness. Same with the wayfinding signage. But this is just an opportunity to make things a little bit better for everybody, so when those funds are available, we go after them, and like to ask for your approval on our acceptance.
Thank you so much for your hard work of getting, applying, finding these grants to apply for, and just for making our public transportation more accessible, helping people get where they need to go. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't shout out Nick Cook and Tim McWhorter, these are, those are the two guys that basically run transit, as well as Alex, so we got a pretty good team here for transit, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Jake, thank you, team. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-188.
Municipal Order Approving the Purchase of Greenway Solar Lighting in the Amount of $112,000 with INGO Planet Products through the Cooperative Purchasing Contract with Houston-Galveston Area Council.
Moved.
Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This is an exciting project, something we've never done before. You all approved this in the FY26 budget, but we are planning to do some solar-powered lights along the Greenways Trail. There's three sections we're looking at doing this at, let me find it, is Cemetery Road from Brightway to Lover's Lane, there's about 15 poles through that section. Sanders Street area is another area, over behind the Walmart on Veterans, about 17 poles back through that path. And then the third area is Atlanta Way, three poles that's, connects to Scottsville Road. And so we went out and found this on the Galveston, I'm sorry, Houston-Galveston Area Council Purchasing Cooperative Agreement, and proposing to do this for roughly 112,000. Daniel Coulter is here with Public Works, can answer any questions you might have on this, but we think this is gonna be a really good project. We'll see, this be a good test for us, to see how these work, and provide some additional safety, security along these greenways path, greenway paths after dark. So again, Daniel's here, can answer any questions you might have on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Daniel?
I'd like, from Broadway to Fairview, is this in addition to the streetlights that are already out there? How does that work?
This is areas that, for areas that don't currently have that lighting, like on Brightway and Lover's Lane, Brightway going into town, streetlights already exist. From Brightway to Lover's Lane, there's none. So the solar option, we're doing this in-house, we're not running conduit, we're not running electrical wires, and easy maintenance, so kind of fill those gaps.
That makes sense.
Daniel, thank you guys for having us. I remember when I was a student at WKU, the, a lot of us probably went to WKU, they used to have those lighting, so for the safety, it's gonna be very important, because, especially if it's not illuminated, when people are going through there, but also because the way it's gonna be powered, I believe it's gonna save the city some money too, right?
Absolutely. There's, there's not gonna be a meter cost that we're paying monthly, we're using some of that renewable energy from the sun. Everything's battery, these are designed to hold several days' worth, even if we're, we're in an overcast situation. And these have sensors, so if, if no one's walking on those greenways, they, they can, especially in the areas where no one else would be, they, they turn themselves off. When it detects motion, they turn themselves on. They're dark sky compliant, we spent a lot of time looking at it, and, and it's not, you know, in the past, greenways have always been for recreational use. Now, it's, it's, it's an essential corridor, commuting, exercise, access to services, to Walmarts, to Veterans Memorial. So it fills a huge gap, without the need of overhead, electrical, or the costs associated with conduits, not disturbing the natural greenways. So, so we feel this is a good pilot to try these locations, 100% from some collaboration with BikeWalkBG, with citizen requests in a lot of these areas. So we, we, we listened, and we're looking to deliver an option to satisfy their needs. Thank you.
Daniel, are these a lower height than normal streetlights, or can you explain that a little bit?
Well, these are gonna vary. We reached out to several different companies, even though this is a cooperative purchase, we wanted to do our due diligence. So they do a lighting survey, and kind of a study, and, and kind of tell us, based on the area we're in, exactly, based on the solar region, what we need, what size solar panel, a lot of those things. So part of that was looking at the height. So, so this is varying heights, like on Cemetery Road, some of those poles are gonna be 20-foot tall, just to get the light shed along the greenway. Some of the areas that are more, more actually in a natural greenway area, those with the trees and everything else will be a little lower to the ground, those will be 14-foot tall on Sanders Street and Atlanta Way.
I just want to echo everyone's thanks. I know the neighborhoods, you know, they love these greenways, and the way that helps them stay active and connect to services, and this was just a huge request, I know, 'cause, right, if you don't feel safe, it's hard to use those amenities, and so I know this will help a lot more folks feel like they can use these greenways, and so excited to see how this initial project goes, and how we can expand it to connect more of our community and, and keep it safer. So thank you all so much for doing this.
Thank you Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, no further questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-189.
Municipal Order Authorizing Agreements Between the City of Bowling Green Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., Warren County and City County Planning Commission for the Information Technology Department, in the total amount of $270,900.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
Environmental Systems Research Institute, what we call ESRI, is a tool that we use for GIS, and a lot of people use this throughout the city, as well as Warren County and the Planning Commission. Danita went out and found, or actually worked a deal with ARC GIS to perform this for us. They analyze spatial relationships with the, and share the geographic information, also provides more effective ways of doing a lot of things with what planning and zoning does, what NCS does, a lot of different players in this, but asking for a three-year agreement, and the total cost is the 270,000, would be split three ways, city 162, 540, and then county would be roughly 90,000, 90,300, and then, actually two ways, 60, 40, city and county, and this is all included in the FY26 budget. Danita's here, after I butchered all this, can answer your questions and clear things up, but this is our GIS system that is heavily used by multiple departments.
Thank you, Danita, back there, for being. Commissioners, questions at this time? All right, we trust you, Danita. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-190.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Bid Number 202601 for Police Vehicles from Don Franklin Somerset, in an amount not to exceed $1,109,370.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to thank Lieutenant Colonel Bowles for, for work on this, as well as Major Jason Scott and Captain Todd Porter, but these are also, were also included in your FY26 budget. These are replacement vehicles for the Police Department, 26, full-size SUVs, received bids from, I think, four different auto dealers, and we are going with Don Franklin. They had the best proposal, and I think total cost on these is around 1,276, 1,276,000. Chief Lani is here to answer any of your questions, but these are all gonna be the Dard, the Dodge Durango's, thank you, I went blank, Dodge Durango's. Ask for your approval.
Great. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. I kind of wanted Corvettes, chief, but they're out of our, our league.
And he said Dodge Dart, I kind of did have a question.
Coordinates Number BG 2025-15, first reading, non-binding.
Orders Amending Code of Ordinances. Orders Amending Chapter 11 Finance, Taxation, and Economic Development of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances.
Moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
I'm gonna hand this one off to Katie Schaller-Ward, our Assistant City Manager, to give you a brief overview of what, what all is in here. Katie?
So, in just general terms, a lot of this is administrative cleanup. We haven't touched this chapter in a little while. We do have several more changes to come when it comes to our Job Development Incentive Program, which is 11-6 subchapter. I wasn't prepared to bring that forward yet, but I wanted to go ahead and bring the changes we'd been working on for the past couple of years, get those behind us, get them done, and then I can focus in on 11-6, and work with the JDI P Committee on proposing some additional incentives for bringing economic development into Bowling Green. But again, that, that piece will come later. This is just doing the administrative changes, there's not very many of them, but if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to, to answer those.
Thank you, Katie. Your diligence, and congratulations personally, so. Questions at this time? Okay, and this will have a second reading on the next commission. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Orders Number BG 2025-16, first reading, non-binding.
Orders Amending Code of Ordinances. Orders Amending Chapters 2 Administration, 15 Business and General Regulations, 22 Traffic and Motor Vehicles, and 25 Code of Ethics of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to Make Administrative Revisions.
Moved.
Second.
Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
There's been a number of changes in positions, and this ordinance, before you hear, affects several chapters. Chapter 2 is just our administration chapter. In that chapter, we identify different offices, where people are. So as you all know, the City Clerk's Office is in the legal now, Office of Law, instead of the City Manager. Another change, spoiler alert, Katie will be moving to the City Manager's Office here soon, so we've got, we went ahead and put that in there. Brent Childers had some reorg, had a reorganization in his, his Department Community Engagement Division, took the place of Neighborhood Services Division, so we've got that and changed, got that one changed. It merged with the International Communities, so we struck that. It's just a lot of changes like that. Going forward, just going through here, we did add some language under Chief Financial Officer in 2-6, some duties there, and corrected for that. Chapter 2-9, under laws, where we put the City Clerk's responsibilities. 2-13 is Community Engagement Manager, Lada, her new job, new position, those duties. We added the Better BG KY, the nonprofit, under 2-24. Let's see, going on, I'm trying to look through here, not to delay, but that's about it for Chapter 2. Going into Chapter 15 is where we also, the Community Engagement Division is also mentioned there, so we corrected that language. Chapter 22, another spot for Community Engagement Division reference there. Chapter 22-5, same language changes, and, let's see, I think that's about it. We didn't, 25 was the, I'm sorry, Ashley, the titles again in Chapter 25. City Internal Auditor was updated, and that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Run down. All right, Commissioners, questions? Okay, and at this time, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Orders Number BG 2025-17, first reading, non-binding.
Orders Relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Orders Amending the Classification Pay Schedule D for Department Head Management of the City of Bowling Green for Fiscal Year 2026.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
As I have spoken individually with you all about the change we would like to make with Assistant City Manager, I'd like to thank you for that. This is to put that into play. Over the recent years, it's, you know, with our rapid growth, it's, we've seen an increase in the pace of things, to effectively manage things from the Office of City Manager. There's a lot going on, a lot of boards, a lot of meetings, and so Katie is gonna come over to City Hall here in the, pretty soon. And with that change, we are going to go back to the position of Chief Financial Officer, and so we have amended the schedule, Schedule D. We'll note that back before 2019, we had six levels in this schedule, and we went to three levels. Prior to FY19, in those six levels, the CFO and the City Attorney were in the top grade, grade six, proposing to reshuffle this again, with the Assistant City Manager remaining in D3, and then the Chief, Chief Financial Officer going into grade D2. So recommending this to you tonight, asking for your approval, and would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners, questions?
Thank you again.
Well, many people know that as a city grows, you have to make decisions to retain, recruit, and hopefully have the caliber of people that is gonna continue, that can continue leading your city in the right way. And last year, you know, our city was recognized as the Kentucky League of Cities, and I think Jeff made a statement, that's by no mistake. There's a reason why we have leaders at this position, making tough decisions, solving murders, solving crimes, building, you know, and advocating for new fire facilities. However, our city, you know, is not the same size. We're, we're going to be soon over 600 employees, and to maintain with the same crew of leadership, it's, it's impossible to do, and you have to have that team. And there will be a day where you'll, we'll all move on, all of us. That's part of life. But what will we do, and how will we maintain, and how will we sustain, and how will we keep leading? Leading is the key, and so these are, are big factors. But they're necessary to be successful, and we are on a successful route, and I believe in these efforts, and I, I believe that Jeff needs an Assistant City Manager, and Katie, I think you're, you know, you're, you're right for the job. And so this is a promotion. I know this is a step up for others, but this is a promotion for you. Aaron, this is a promotion for you. So I would like to say, I think we have the right people at the right time, at the right place, and this is the right move. Commissioners?
I agree. Congratulations to everybody. I think it's a great move. One person can only be at so many things, and I think we all know that.
Just want to give Katie all my dirty work today now, so.
That's, that's kind of how I'm seeing it work across the street.
Thank, thank you, thank you very much. It, it takes a team, takes an army, it's all about people, and we've got a great, great team here. I can't thank our department heads enough, and the division managers, and, and on down the line. It's, it's, it's a team effort, so thank you.
Other further comments?
I'll just say, Katie, I'm just so excited to, for you to come onto the, the City Manager, City Hall staff. It's always been such a It's always been such a pleasure working with you all of my years in City Commission. You have always been so kind, and no matter what question I have, how little it is or how big it is, you, with all of your institutional knowledge, it's like I can surprise you with any question, and you will know all the history of what came to this moment. And so I can, have always been able to rely on you to be able to bring me up to speed on everything. And then Erin, seeing you just working in our community with Yidded Way and just with our city, making sure that we are being good stewards of all the finances, I'm just really excited to work with you in your new role, and then Erin with you in your new role. It's just really exciting for our city, and just look forward to, keen to work with you all to take care of it.
Going to make Erin official at the next meeting, so that, that's, that's coming your way.
Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-191.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for City Manager Jeff Mizel to attend the Kentucky CPA Summer Education Conference in Gulf Shores, Alabama.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
I still try, why not try? I do. I maintain my CPA certification, and I have to get 60 hours every two years, which is a challenge for me sometimes. And so this was an opportunity for me to knock out a third of those at one time in a week's time. And so we, we looked at the one big beautiful bill, we looked at economic, financial markets, AI, cybersecurity, lots of good topics, and I appreciate you all allowing me to attend and knock out those hours, so thank you.
Further questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-192.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for Mayor Todd Alcott to attend Leadership Kentucky in Pikeville, Kentucky.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Just would like to say thank you. I've been Kentucky leadership, been able to go to Brea, Kentucky, the first time, Pikeville. It's incredible learning experience. There's actually 52 members of this class. They're going to be in Bowling Green on October 15th to the 17th. One day, they're going to go to Fort Campbell, but we're trying to put together an itinerary. They've asked us to, to work with them, and it's exciting. We're actually going to Orangeboro next month, but to have this opportunity, I know Sue has done this in the past, and I'd just like to say thank you. I think it's money well spent. I'm learning a lot about Kentucky, but I'm really advocating for Bowling Green and trying to learn some things and making some incredible connections for our community. And I just want to say thank you to the Commissioners for allowing me to do this and to the city.
It is a great opportunity to network across the state of Kentucky, because they're very deliberate on how they select the people that go into this. There's maybe two or three from this area, but then they'll be across the entire state. So it really does help when you have questions or issues, and I still pick up the phone and call classmates, and we still get together. So congratulations on that. I think it's, it's really worthwhile.
Further questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Okay. Mrs. Jackson is going to check for public comments. Our next scheduled meeting will be August 19th, 2025. All right.
Mayor, you're not, you're not having public.